Assalamualaikum, my to Allah to the family. We pray everyone as well. It's Wednesday evening, Insha Allah. Open up with a stock for lobby heat, couple prayers, Insha Allah, and get right into the text. We pray everyone is able to participate this evening, Insha Allah, for a good discussion on Imaan, Islam, and and the reading of Path of the Moris Siddiq. Our beloved Sheikh Sufi Ba, it is Jeff. Bismillah, Good will allow him in his shitan regime. Laa'ula'ula quwwata laa'ula'ula wa quwwala'ul ladim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Stock for lobby heat, may Allah continue to forgive us for our sins, no unknown commitment to be committed, everything in between. Thank you Allah. He continue to protect our Sheikh and his travels. Continue to raise his station. Inshallah, continue to grow our Dara. Protect our families, loved ones, in and outside of our presence, Insha Allah. Allah may protect us from ourselves. Ya Allah. And may your attributes shine forth to us, Insha Allah. Stock for Allah. Hadir Sheikh Zulu, hadir Sheikh Sufi Ba. Hadir Bora Ndaan. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Allahu ma'salih wasalam. Barakallah. Sayyidina wa Muhammadina Muhammadina wa alihi wasallam. We took a bow, menili wa jikal Kareem. We call it ta'ibana lekbi. Stock for lobby heat. Stock for Allah, Allah deen wa tu. Ilaihi min du'a'harin wa mingayu. Stock for Allah, Allah deen wa tu. Ilaihi min du'a'harin wa mingayu. Salatu huba ki wajil ilahi makfiratan min jumnatul manahi. Tutu'luu min jumnatil sega'iri ma alqba'iri wa min damaa'iri. Kafiru lekfiyyu ma takadama wa ma ta'akhraa ma abainna'ahuma. Tahimniya ilma wa zinni ilma wa amalan wa adban wa fa'ma. Abiyalikshifil uluman nafiya. Wajah hayatii men shaka imaniya. Ekshifli ala shrao wa gawamida. Ekayra man kasya fasirangamida. Nishmaa jamia ma tafada kalada. Katimina kiri wasafil kalada. Ikuluda tufaqudul azamaya. Abibi kun wa tasim man kalamiya. Abliyaya akramu fitlawa. Karan kati ra min kawal halawa. Abliyakliyala huma fiyayati. Wajah fuadi wa tena hayatii. Abliyakani beshwa kuli manya tu. Walizwahira bin maya'ul gayu. Kabula na kurubi hita inan manazanubi wal ma'asi wal afati. Atal al-kula jana talati wida. Mutakumi rahmatika ya rahmanu ya rahimu. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Salaatu fati one time. Bismillah, Allahu ma'salih laa sayyidina Muhammad. Al-fatihiri ma uglika. Wal kati mili ma sabaka. Naasiri al-haki bil-haki. Wal hadi ila siratika mustaqim. Wal alihi akka qadrhi wa meqdari ladim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Salaatu sunjina Allahu ma'salih laa sayyidina Muhammad. Salaatan. Sunjina bihaa. Minja mi'rahwal wal faa. Mta'gdiya nabihaa. Jamil hajjaat. Wtutuhir nabihaa. Minja mi sayaa. Ta'faa nabihaa. Indaka laa darajaat. Wtubu diya nabihaa. Xalga yad. Minja mi ukayra. Feel how you're over there, my. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Prayer on the Prophet by Sheikh Kamidu Bamba three times, Insha Allah. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Allahu ma'salih umutta Muhammad sallahu ala alihi wasallam. Allahu ma'farizan umutti Muhammad sallahu ala alihi wasallam. Allahu ma'irham umutta Muhammad sallahu ala alihi wasallam. Allahu ma'salih umutta Muhammad sallahu ala alihi wasallam. Allahu ma'farizan umutti Muhammad sallahu ala alihi wasallam. Allahu ma'irham umutta Muhammad sallahu ala alihi wasallam. Allahu ma'salih umutta Muhammad sallahu ala alihi wasallam. Allahu ma'farizan umutti Muhammad sallahu ala alihi wasallam. Allahu ma'irham umutta Muhammad sallahu ala alihi wasallam. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Kufi tu. Ka'faya ayin soor. Ka'faya ayin soor. Ka'faya ayin soor. Kufi tu. Kula garadiyin allahu. Bissiri laa ilaha illallahu. Abli maradiya akma'auahu. Bissiri laa ilaha illallahu. Ya siriyal usraakma'auahu. Bissiri laa ilaha illallahu. Ala naviyah Mustafi alaa'u salibi laa ilaha illallahu. Salaatan mugniin bi salam ala hi. Bissiri laa ilaha illallahu. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Suppana wa biqabul izaytami asifun. Salam ala mercy li. Alhamdulillah. He rock Bill Alameen. Bakishwin Salihu. 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 Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Fatihah. Alhamdulillah. He rock Bill Alameen. Allahu ma'rahmanirrahim. Alik yomadin. Ya kna'buruwa. Ya knastain. Idina sirat al mustaqim. Sirat al dina. Namta'alehim. Dairo magduvi alehim. Waladu. Bismillah. Stock for Allah. Stock for Allah. Stock for Allah. Again, Assalamualaikum, one note to the family. It's good to see everyone this evening, Insha Allah. We'll pick up from where we were last week, but we, uh, had the intention of, um, asking a few study guide questions just to see where we were. Inshallah, we're trying to build a study guide for this particular texts, so we wanted to ask a couple of questions. Did anybody want to tell us real quickly, what are one of the five pillars of Islam, Insha Allah? If you know all five. I know we have a stew guest here today. Stock for Allah. Salam. Assalamualaikum, Sheikh. Fatima Sheikh Mount Building. Brother Daha, Sister Carolyn, Brother Ba Noon, Sheikh Ayah Sheikh, I saw.
Salam, brother. Is it fasting and Ramadan, one of the pillars?
Fasting and Ramadan, Alhamdulillah. There it is. Salaat is another one, Insha Allah. There were, um, I'm not sure how many of us were here last week or the week before. I think, uh, so I don't want to leave anything out. But Insha Allah, let's name these five pillars and then we'll touch briefly on Islam. Then we can name six articles, touch briefly on Imaan before we read into Isaan, Insha Allah. We have fasting for one pillar of Islam, Insha Allah. See if I can slide. Stock for Allah. We'll shout them out then. This is a cot. The giving of alms and charity, Insha Allah, this is a lot. The five prayers that we make daily. Fasting, the brother said, the Hajj, making the pilgrimage. Insha Allah, and the very, very first one. She's the most important, which is our Shahada. Stock for Allah. Six articles of faith. Starting with the belief of Allah. The belief in the angels, the belief in the holy books, the belief in the prophets, the belief in the day of judgment. And the belief in the divine decree. And last week, it'd be just, we got into some details into all of these realities of Islam, Imaan, that, uh, just expounded on all of our knowledge of the subjects, Insha Allah, so. Essentially, what we got from this last week was that we need to have a certainty in our minds when it comes to the belief in Allah, the belief in the angels, the prophets, holy books, the day of judgment and divine decree, that an unshakable Yaqeen and certainty over these six pillars. We established that we have to know or practice Imaan before coming into contact with Islam, before we have to know what it is that we're believing in, in order to effectually practice the way. It wouldn't make sense to make a salaat. And not know the purpose and who we're praying to and how to go about the process of making a salaat. Again, the angels, is having knowledge of the angels and their purpose and their jobs with Allah. How can we wear these realities amongst ourselves and, uh, just take on these roles and again, further and expand our certainty and Yaqeen of these beings, the belief in Allah, again, the belief in the angels, belief in the prophets. We read that there's over a hundred and twenty-four thousand prophets. The belief in the revealed books said that each prophet came with books, most not soft, not each of them, but many of them came with their own books. And many of them carried out the laws and the books. That the day of judgment and the divine decree, the certainty that we are all going to meet a day where we will be judged by Allah. Suppana wa to Allah. And that his decree is over our life, his entire power is in the midst of everything. So I just want to summarize briefly on Imaan. What it was that we read from last week and the, uh, the essential, just the essence of it. That we have to have a certainty, unshakable, in all six of these articles of our faith. Bismillah. Islam, we'll touch based on this salaat real quick. It's certain steps within this salaat. The pillar of Islam, testimony faith, first part is the Shahada. Shaddow in laa ilaha illallah, shaddow in Muhammadur Rasulullah. It's like we're constantly affirming this witnessing. Constantly affirming that Allah is the only being to be worshipped, constantly affirming that Muhammad, peace be upon him, the praise worthy one is the prophet, is the messenger of Allah. Constantly reaffirming it. Five times a day, we're told. The first step into Islam. A shaddow in. I bear witness. Laa ilaha illallah. There is no being worthy of worship. Or there is no being other than Allah. It's saying this is including the faith in Allah, his attributes and acts. Muhammad, peace be upon him. The prophet of the, excuse me, is the prophet of Allah is including the belief in all the prophets, the angels, the revealed books, the last day and the divine decree, so just in those two statements. We're affirming all of these things, the full faith in Allah, all of his attributes and acts. Everything he's done, doing and will continue to do, Insha Allah. Just by saying Muhammadur Rasulullah is including the belief in all of those a hundred and twenty-four thousand prophets. All of the angels, all of the revealed books. Affirming the last day and the divine decree. Alhamdulillah. Most important part of the salaat is the first part, making the intention. There are obligations of the far the obligatory recommendations of prayer and sunnah, stock for Allah. And there are fifteen obligations of prayer. Read them real quickly. The Nia intention to perform the prayer. The taqbeer, Allahu Akbar, saying Allah is the greatest before starting. The qiyam, standing in an upright position while saying taqbeer. Allahu Akbar. Recitation of the first chapter of the Holy Quran, Al-Fatiyah. Standing upright while saying Al-Fatiyah. Then ruku, bowing. Stand up after bowing. The suju, the prostration. Sitting after the first prostration, standing after the second prostration. Having the intention to follow behind the leader of the prayer. Respecting the different positions of the prayer, sitting in a resting position. And the last sitting before saying, may peace be upon you, Assalamualaikum. Saying Assalamualaikum to the right and then on the left. Alhamdulillah. Knowing the, the there's our eighteen sunnah recommendations for calling people to pray, just calling out to others, of making a phone call to someone, hey, do you want to make this prayer together? There's a there's a blessing in that, Alhamdulillah, if one is able. Making sure to recite other chapters of the Holy Quran. Standing upright when the Quran is being recited. Reciting out loud when it's required, and silently when it's required. Different parts of the day where in the morning time, we should be reciting out loud. Towards the latter part of the day, the afternoon, we're supposed to recite silently and then when Magrib and Ishr return, we recite out loud again, Insha Allah. Taqbeer. These are just some of the basic things in Islam that we should be knowing and practicing within our salaat. And there's many of books just on the topic of salaat. And, and the different realities within each position and the purpose of the positions and the times of days and Alhamdulillah. So moving on to fasting, just again, the intention is the first and foremost. Sheikh says, if we don't make the intention to fast, then we just went hungry all day. The recommendation for breaking the fast is to break it after sunset, eat a small meal during the last portion of the night. And protecting your tongue from futility lies in decency. That's the real fast. Is actually fasting from those lower attributes within ourselves, lower desires, lower actions and thoughts. To protect our tongue from futility, lies and indecency. Alhamdulillah. The cot, let's read this real quick to understand the meaning of the cot and purpose, Insha Allah. First, again, making the intention to give to charity. Serving at specific times to give charity. Well, this is speaking of thinking during Ramadan. And there's another time during our calendar where we should be giving to cot. Sadaka is another term for charity that can be given at any time, but this is specifically speaking about the cot that's given during certain times. It's saying that there's a certain legal amount of property and money to be required to give to charity. Do not transfer your property to others and do not be required, that in order to not be required to give charity. And don't try to get out of giving to charity. By giving, giving your, 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 your property to others as if you don't have enough to give. There it is, Sheikh Abu Babi this morning, I think it was the aphorism we're speaking on. And saying that this, this abundance, this wealth that we're giving out of our charity isn't always money. But it could be of our, our, just our talents, our good deeds, anything that we may be good at or abundant in, our knowledge, Insha Allah. And give these things as a charity. One, it should be given with satisfaction, not regretfully. It should not be given from the best that you have or the worst that you have, and it should be given discreetly to avoid making show or rea, showing off. Fifth pillar, it's the Hajj, having the intention to make the pilgrimage. Walking around the Kaaba, walking between the two hills of Safa and Marwa, making the prayer at the station of Mount Arifat. These are the twelve recommendations of pilgrimage. Ritual bath, wearing one piece of cloth without stitching, wearing sandals and shoulder covering, repeating the phrase, here I am, Lord, here I am. Walking around the Kaaba, kissing or touching the black stone. Man should walk fast during the first three circumambulations around the Kaaba. Praying to Allah while walking around the Kaaba, kissing the black stone before walking between the hills of Safa and Marwa. Climbing the hills of Safa and Marwa, man should walk fast between Safa and Marwa and staying a prayer on top of Safa and Marwa. I'm not sure if anyone has ever watched live any clips from Hajj and just seen it. People go through the different rituals, Insha Allah, it's interesting. Stock for Allah. So, yeah, bless anyone who has the intention to make Hajj to Mecca, Insha Allah, anyone. Spoke on Hajj one time, just the, the, the purpose of moving from one place to another. Now all of the prophets, it seemed to made, many of them made some form of Hajj from, had to move from one place physically to another, even even Adam, Alayhi Salam. From one state to one place within the garden, it's been removed outside now of the garden. And spreading out from there and how many stories of just the prophets and the people moving from one place to another, so. The Sheikh always speaks of traveling and the purpose of traveling, getting out of our comfort zone, seeing different environments, interacting with different people, different cultures and whatnot, um. When I think of the Hajj, this is what I think of, someone who's had to move around quite often. And not understanding it as a child, but appreciating it later on in life. So, this now it's, it's almost like it's, it's nothing to get up and just go. Sometimes we see around us, others may not be so quick to move from, you know, just out, out, out there, off to a corner. Or from one city to the next. Let alone one state, one country to the next. So we, uh, we definitely are traveling people. Travel, um, just invoke something different. Then within the spirit, when we get to, when we truly, especially if we make it with the intention to travel for the sake of Allah. So, a stock for us, one can make the Hajj to Mecca. You know, any significant travel is for the sake of Allah. We pray, you know, Allah blesses that as a, as a form of pilgrimage. Especially if we're relocating, you know, from, from, uh, one, one space to another permanently. And after, uh, just a different again, different cultures, different environments, Alhamdulillah. So that's, uh, the Hajj was something I was meditating on for a while. And why was, why was it so important to go to Mecca per se, but you know, again, many of the prophets, they traveled to different places. Mecca wasn't always, you know, the, the, the the place that we, we, uh, we faced wasn't always in that direction when we're making prayer. Insha Allah. So again, every, every which way we turn, face of Allah is there, Alhamdulillah. So Allah create us to help us to travel more, Insha Allah. Bismillah. Start on Isaan, and again, we were, uh, reading this text by Sheikh Sufi Ba, the Path of the Moris Siddiq, seven stations of the soul. As a review for ourselves and, and for the Dara as well. We are reading it word by word, Insha Allah. If anyone would like to join in the reading, we can. Um, any questions or comments at all? We'll try to stop in between, but anytime either raise your hand or you can definitely cut us off with a Bismillah. We can, uh, answer your question, hear your comment, Insha Allah. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Stock for Allah. There it is, Sheikh Abu Babi, how you doing? Assalamualaikum.
Good. So, yeah, I'm good for a cutoff with a Bismillah. Dude, um, I really like what you said about the traveling. That's, that's pretty uh, just spot on and real. And, um, I wanted to add to that, so it was so beautifully said, and I felt inspired to add to it. That for those of us who don't have the means to do that physical travel. You know, because Sheikh Kamidu Bamba, as far as I know, he didn't, he didn't go to Mecca. Um, he didn't make the pilgrimage. Um, he didn't make the pilgrimage. You know, because he couldn't, you know, it was under, he was in exile, then he was under house arrest, et cetera, et cetera. But there's the, there's the inner Hajj that you can do, which some of, um, the Sufis talk about. And, um, that inner Hajj, it's really interesting because the five pillars connect like a star. You know how like a star has lines that go from one point to another point? So like that inner Hajj, that inner journey, that inner traveling. Um, some sheiks would say begins at Shabban. That's like a couple of months before Ramadan. Right? It begins at Shabban and then like Shabban, you prepare for Ramadan. And in Ramadan, that fasting that you do, right? You, you put on, it gives you the cloak of what they call Taqwa, God consciousness. That's what the fasting is supposed to do is to like bring you closer to Allah. So you can know like that Shahada, Lailaha Illallah. Right? And if you go through Ramadan, it's two months in between, I think. And then you get to Hajj. In those four months is what we call a rebirth. Like that is your opportunity every single year to be reborn and new. You can become as new as you were when you were a baby, right? And but that's the inner travel that you do. You go inside yourself to recognize Lailaha Illallah, which is the Shahada. Right? And you come out brand new. So you can do Thanksgiving in Saffar, where that's a different story. We're not going to go there. And but then where does the Salat come in? The Salat is also that rebirth, that journey you do every day. So the steps to Hajj are five. As there are five salats, you know, five times that you pray and, um, and all these things, these rituals that we do are so you can become anew, right? Because who were you when you were born? Like who were you when you were first created? You know, in that, in that pristine place? Um, you knew, you had the knowledge of yourself and you had the knowledge of God. So we're always trying to get, go back, right? Like, and that's what the zikr is. Remember, like, remember, you're always trying to go back to that beginning, you know? And, um, so those, that's what the, that's the sort of like the esoteric, like inner journey that you do with the five pillars. And, um, with Hajj, I hope that, I hope that I didn't like go over everybody with that. But what's happening, you said, you, what you said, I was like, oh, I gotta add on to that.
Alhamdulillah. Uh, uh, what, what I, what I got from what you said just now was that there were, there's an inner reality and an outer reality or hidden reality. And a, uh, uh, exposed reality to the five pillars of Islam. So and then we spoke on that in one of Brother Kofi's classes as well, too. We, uh, and he was speaking on the, and what Divine Love, Seeking Divine Love. It was, uh, yeah, how the each ass, each five, the five pillars all have a physical nature to them. Where the Shahada, we, you know, we speak it out loud, but we definitely have to have that or feel that in an inner space. Just to, to bear witness is a, you know, only, 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 you can't just say that. You can say it. And like, you know, when we got to, we have to say it again till we, it becomes a reality. Insha Allah, inwardly, um, the fasting definitely is physical, but it's not just from food. Like we just read is from all sorts of, you know, attributes and, and, and thoughts and just in actions and various things. Uh, the Hajj, like you just said, this, there's a cut, this is a cut, it could be money. You could definitely just get, put some money in somebody's hand, but just, you know, a kind word, a, a kind act, a deed can be looked at or be considered, you know, charity as well. So just again, the inward and outer realities of just the five pillars. Where we see, we see something on the outside, we're doing, we're making these motions to make Salat and or we're doing our zikr and things of that nature, but it's as much as, as it has a a physical response, you know, and if it's observed, that's a, that's a whole nother thing. If we happen to be observed in that, in any of these processes, but just observing ourselves in the five pillars, knowing, like you said, there's an inward and outward reality to all of these things. You can go take a, take a pilgrimage to a park. And you know, lo, uh, uh, in the local community and consider and make, make that some type of pilgrimage and just make it as if you, if we can't go anywhere else, you know, and just sit with Allah, Insha Allah. And ask Allah, you know, to expand that. But, um, just taking from, you know, what the shek teaches, just start where we are, no matter where we are, Insha Allah, and just we take one step towards Allah, he's taking ten steps towards us, Insha Allah.
Word.
Word up, word up. Trying to keep it interesting, Insha Allah, without, without, like you said, going, going way over, but, um, because it's a lot of information. And again, this, 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 this text is, is cut first, foremost, it's coming from, straight from Sheikh Kamabamba. Translated by Sheikh Abdul Afami with our beloved Sheikh Sufi Ba. So like the words that we're reading are a, you know, a true, a true translation as we gonna get from, straight from Sheikh Abdul Bamba. So I just, I just always find it intriguing, you know, it's coming straight, it's coming through, uh, Sheikh Sufi Ba, you know, someone who who's, who's doing the work here for us now, you know, we, we can see him, we can touch him. Alhamdulillah. And, uh, he's just making it plain, you know, it's, it's, it, it looks like basic information on Iman, Islam, Isan. But again, when we expound on what, what does it mean to believe in Allah? What does it truly mean to believe in the angels? Do we know any of the angels? You know, many people say they believe in angels, but can we, can we name any of them or their purpose and job? You know? So I appreciate Islam for just having making, making a, making the path straight and plain, Alhamdulillah. And having a shek to get, to guide us, making it straight and plain, Alhamdulillah. Because Isan again, is where we merge the two. At one point, I, I knew about Islam, knew there was such thing as Islam, but I didn't know there was a Iman or an Isan, what are these two things? Knew there was a Muslim. I didn't know there was a Mu'min and a Muslim. Let me just easy. There's levels, as, as they, as they say, as we say, there's levels. Alhamdulillah. So Insha Allah, we'll, uh, we'll start on Isan. And again, any questions or comments? Don't hesitate to jump in, Insha Allah. Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. Any, any questions or comments now before we go forward, Saktu la. I mean, Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. Isan is purity of intention and sincerity in action. We've heard this before from the shek. Isan is purity of intention and sincerity in action. One more time, Isan is purity of intention and the sincerity in action. Isan is to be certain, there, there is no action in the world and no intention in the soul that Allah does not know about. In this state, all of the acts of the worship will be according to the will of Allah. The worshipper is conscious that he is in the sight of Allah. So he only does that which pleases Allah. Because of this, the Prophet of Allah, peace be upon him, said, worship Allah as if you see him, and if you do not see him, know that he sees you. This teaching is found in the Quran and the verse, and he is with you wherever you are. By Isan, the worshipper has assurance that his worship is accepted. Iman and Islam are validated by Isan. When the worshipper realizes Iman by Tahid and Islam by Fiqh, he becomes safe from hidden and apparent shirt. Then the worshipper enters into Isan by Taswuf, or what is referred to as seeking the perfection through initiation. When the worshipper realizes all three of these, Allah makes him free from spiritual struggle and honors him with protection from sin. Immunity from disbelief, Saktu la. Immunity from disbelief is achieved by Iman. Immunity from disrespect of the Sharia law is achieved by Islam. Read that again. Immunity from disbelief is achieved by Iman. Again, what is Iman? Having a knowledge and understanding of those six articles of faith. And immunity and from disrespect of the Sharia is achieved by Islam. So again, knowing the, the, the five pillars, actually practicing the five pillars. Think Sheikh Kamabamba says somewhere that if, if one is only practicing Taswuf without the Sharia, he, he, he's considered a heretic. So Alhamdulillah, we can, we can, we can go to a mosque or a place of worship comfortably. It's like I virtually like we, we're not just you know, looking through the window where the shek says. Insha Allah, we're actually practicing our basics to make full light of anything Allah has for us. Because it's a true blessing from Allah to find a sheik is what this is going to speak of in a second. As it says, seeking perfection through initiation. When the worshipper realizes all three of these, Allah makes him free from spiritual struggle and honors him with protection from sin. Immunity from disbelief is achieved by Iman. Immunity from disrespect of the Sharia of the law is achieved by Islam. Immunity from self glorification, Ria, is achieved by Isan, with purity and sincerity in action. The discipline of Iman and Tahid is, excuse me, is Tahid, the discipline of Islam is Fiqh, and the discipline of Isan is Taswuf, Sufism. The definition of Taswuf according to Al Ghazali is to purify the heart and to dedicate to Allah. Without turning your attention to other than Allah. The first thing a Murid, also spelled Ma'ri'i, when speaking up to disciple Sheikh Kamabamba, should obtain is the knowledge of Tahid according to the teachings of the Sunnah. Stop there. Any questions or comments? Because that was a lot in, in that first paragraph or two, just speaking on Isan. If we didn't have a experience or any type of knowledge of Sufism to make, to bring, you know, into the triangle, into the fold of Islam or Iman. How are we trying to word this? We'll go forward. I think it tells us here, Saktu la. Next, he should learn how to perfect his personal obligation of worship by Fiqh. Speaking of Islam. After this, his focus is to obtain junction with Suhul to the Lord. He should be initiated by a real master who follows the footsteps of the Prophet, peace be upon him. The shek gives spiritual education to the Ma'rii through knowledge and worship. He teaches him by changing his actions of extra worship when they become easy and not difficult for the Ma'rii. The definition of Iraada, will, is that, that the Ma'rii should avoid conformity. The Ma'rii should have no will of his own. He should put his soul in accordance with the will of Allah by observing Allah's command and concentrating on Allah's attributes of Qudra, Iraada, Ilm, Hayat, Samah, Basara and Kalan. And we gave those last class, Insha Allah, does anybody know what those six mean before we give them again, Insha Allah, those six, with six or seven attributes, one, two, three, four, five, seven attributes, Saktu la. We'll give them again, Insha Allah. That the Ma'rii should have no will of his own, he should put his soul in accordance with the will of Allah by observing Allah's command and concentrating on Allah's attributes of Qudra, his power, Iraada, his will, Ilm, his knowledge, Hayat, his life, the essence of life. Samah, the hearing, his hearing. Basara, Basir, his seeing. And Kalan, his speech. So again, in a state of Isan, one is constantly observing Allah's command, concentrating on his power. What does that mean to concentrate on his power? Again, going back to the divine decree. And knowing that everything that has happened, happening and will happen, Insha Allah, is only by the Qudra, the power, the decree of Allah. His Iraada, what is Allah's will? Or what does it mean to have the will of Allah? Or to be within the will of Allah? His knowledge is that we'll never know. In, in, in our, in our physical minds, the full knowledge of Allah, but if he gives us just a little bit, that's more than enough. Hayat, his high, just, just the fact that we're breathing right now is a blessing. Let alone all the life going inside and, and around us. His hearing. What does it mean to have Allah's hearing? What does it mean to have his scene? What does it mean to have his speech? Either just questions that we can ask, it's just asking the question itself. With the right intention can be an act of worship, Saktu la. Moving forward, it says, the observance of Qudra, power and the Iraada will is to know that Allah has the power to elevate and perfect you like the Aulia, the friends of Allah, or diminish and humiliate you like one of his enemies. The observance of Ilm, knowledge is to be conscious that Allah absolutely knows all about you. Your thoughts, words, actions, deeds and intentions. The observance of Hayat, life, is to know that Allah is eternal without death. The observance of Samah, hearing and Basara, seeing is to be conscious that at all times Allah sees and hears you. The observance of Kalan, speech, is to conform yourselves to his orders and abstain from his prohibitions. Among the humans, there are believers in divine grace and justice, as well as disbelievers in divine grace and justice. Whoever wants to disbelieve, let him disbelieve. Whoever wants to disbelieve, let him disbelieve. Whoever wants to disbelieve, let him disbelieve. Allah gives his mercy to whom he wants. One part of disbelief is having a bad opinion of those whom Allah has gratified. Those who have his bad opinion have it because they, they limit the mercy of Allah to certain time periods and groups of people. Whoever really seeks the glory of both worlds should always be conscious of Allah, Taqwa. Allah says in the Holy Quran, the highest, the most noble amongst you is the most conscious of Allah, Taqwa. In the next world, after the mercy of Allah, nothing is of benefit other than good actions. Good actions are only accepted on the basis of Taqwa. So again, the intention before every action is establishing the Taqwa or adding, including Allah in the beginning of every action, Insha Allah. The good deeds are only accepted on the basis of Taqwa. Allah says in the Holy Quran that he only accepts the deeds of those who have Taqwa. The Ma'ri should obey the orders of his Sheikh. They should not spend their time in futility. They should increase their spiritual aspiration, Himmer, to reach the Lord. They should always compete for good actions, practice sincere repentance, and give Adia. Adia is not charity, but it is a gift. It was first given to the prophets and then the friends of Allah, the Wali, the Wali Allah, the Wali Allah, Sakhfala, the Wali, Wali Ua'uliya. Adia brings blessings, Barakah to the disciple. The blessings cannot be rented, borrowed, or stolen. The blessings have to be earned. Adia helps the disciple find guidance and enter the paradise that is promised to those who have Taqwa. Stop there on Adia real quick. Adia is not a charity, but it is a gift. It was first given to the prophets and then the friends of Allah. Adia brings blessings to the disciple. The blessings cannot be rented, borrowed, or stolen. The blessings have to be earned. When I see Adia now, when I think of Adia, I think about almost like Cain and Abel. When God asked them for a piece of their lot and they came, you know, one came with crops, one came with meat. What? Nevertheless, that was that wasn't Adia, Sakhfala. When we come, when we visit the Sheikh or any Sheikhs, Insha Allah, we go with the intention of bringing some type of Adia. This is even within the Adha of just the disciple and the Sheikh is to come with gifts, come with something that you know the Sheikh likes or the Sheikh needs, Insha Allah. So just again, the blessings that it's saying, the blessings of an Adia. If we just understood this concept of giving and how the laws work when we, you know, formulate that intention again, when we have, when we focus that intention before the action, Insha Allah. Oh, if we put some prayers, we have some prayers to put with the intention, with the action, Insha Allah. May Allah bless these endeavors, bless these inspirations. Again, these are all things what we're reading about now with Ishaan. This is if you, you may be making your five salats, you may be, you know, practicing. You may know all the six articles and have, you know, knowledge of Fiqh and have knowledge of Yakita. But it's saying when we actually putting them together and we've come in contact with the Sheikh, giving us practices and taking us on this journey, guiding us on this path, that there are certain elements within Ishaan to fine tune those aspects of Islam, to fine tune those aspects of Imaan. But it's mainly focusing on the sincerity in those actions, the sincerity in that knowledge, the sincerity in that worship, Insha Allah. Starting with the intention, purity of intention, go back. Ishaan is purity of intention and sincerity in action. Bismillah, rahmanirrahim. The blessings have to be earned. Adia helps the disciple find guidance and enter the paradise that is promised to those who have Taqwa. Bismillah, the Muslim is between two boundaries, the boundary of Sharia and the boundary of Hakika. The boundary of Sharia prevents you from doing apparent sins. The boundary of Hakika prevents you from doing hidden sins. The pure Sharia is the teaching from the revealed books. The luminous Hakika is what is contained on the hidden tablet, Laum Al Fush, that has been revealed or not revealed in holy books. What Allah, interesting, I would say, that has been revealed or not revealed in holy books. But Allah, the Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, and our order is to be in accordance with the Sharia. It's come from Sheikh Kamu Dabba. Make sure we're in accordance with Sharia. Make sure we, again, we know how to make our Salat, we know how to make our Wudhu, Insha Allah, that we just, and we're practicing fasting, we're practicing Sakat, and again, and knowing and understanding the inner and outer realities for ourselves, Insha Allah, of those five pillars and elements of Islam. Bismillah, there are three kinds of orders. The first type of order is from Allah by his books. This may be, this may be without an intermediary by the Quran or with an intermediary by the Sunnah. These orders are for your benefit. The second type of order is from an Arif, the knower of Allah. These orders are for the benefit of both the Arif and the disciple. The third type of order is from one who has no knowledge. This type of order is for its own benefit and is damaging to the disciple. It was saying this are three kinds of knowledges, I think, that is also what it's speaking of here. And just stay away from the third one. First one again, first type of order or knowledge allowed by his books. This may be without an intermediary by the Quran or with an intermediary by the Sunnah. These orders are for your benefit. The second type of order is from an Arif, the knower of Allah. These orders are for the benefit of both the Arif and the disciple. The third type of order is from one who has no knowledge. This type of order is for its own benefit and is damaging to the disciple. So again, the order, what it's speaking of here, the orders that it's speaking of is or the laws that is coming from, it's coming out of the Sharia or the Quran. So you can get three types. But only the first two are the ones that we're really looking for. Which is the first type is we can get it from the Quran without an intermediary, meaning we, Insha Allah, we can read the Quran and get everything we need, Insha Allah. Or with an intermediary by the Sunnah. So with some guidance, somebody can tell us, hey, Bismillah, the Prophet Muhammad said this, and I need Bismillah, or Sakhfala, the Sunnah says, you know, Bismillah, we can do it this way, Insha Allah. There are four different schools of Islam. Bismillah, Maliki, which we practice in our way of Ma'riya. Al Shafi, Al Hanbal, and Sakhfala, the fourth one escapes me at the moment. Anyone shout it out if you know it. So I'm tip my tongue, but we'll, we'll come back to it. I think it's in here somewhere. We, um, just want to make that point again, that we can get it from the Quran, we can get it from an Arif or a Sheikh. He said, these orders are beneficial to both the Arif and the disciple. But the third order, if anybody who's to give us, someone who doesn't really know giving knowledge for its own benefit is damaging to the disciple. So Allah, may Allah protect us from this, Insha Allah. Bismillah, Sharia and Hakika. Let's read about these two real quick. There are two types of believers. The first follows a guide and the second follows the traditions. It is not permissible to follow a guide who is not in a reef, a knower of Allah. If the guide is in a reef, the one who follows him should never disobey. The believer who follows the traditions of the Prophet will be safe if he practices what the scholars have noted and does not seek to criticize or look for errors in other Muslims. Sharia is pure and exempt from all errors, but all of the believers are not at the same level of comprehension. The Hakika has immunity because it is fixed on the hidden tablet, but the masters have various degrees of understanding. The organ of Imaan is the heart. The organs of Islam are the members of the body. And the organ of Ishaan is the internal being. The disciple has an obligation to respect all books and reference on Tahid, Fiqh, and Taswuf. The disciple is obligated not to seek for the singularity or unique blessing, blessing given to any of the elected masters that was not bestowed upon others. Whoever enters into the ocean of Hakika without the ship of Sharia is unintelligent. They will never reach realization and bring benefit to the community. Bismillah. Any questions or comments? Before we go any further, that was Ishaan from Sheikh Kamu Dabba translated through Sheikh Apul Afami. Sheikh Sufi Badri Jeff. I had a question. I don't know how to ask it now or wait, Insha Allah. How much more do we have to read? This is some more. I guess most of this probably go with Ishaan. You do that. Anybody have any questions or comments on Ishaan, Insha Allah?
Bismillah, I have a comment.
Yes, that's she, that is Jeff.
That is Jeff. We were talking about early about one part that you had mentioned about we should learn how to perfect the personal obligation of worship, perfecting the personal obligation of worship. And that's of course incumbent upon each of us as Ma'ri and as Muslims. And that brought to mind the Holy Quran where it says in chapter five in verse three, "This day have I perfected for you your deen, your way of life, and completed my favor to you and chosen for you Islam as your deen or way of life." So it's telling us that Allah perfected this path and this way of living for us. So the path has been perfected. Now it's up to us to perfect ourselves and bring our Naas into order so that we can best honor and continue to perfect our practice and our worship and our obligation on the path. The path is perfect. Now we have to perfect our worship on the path. And that's one of the things that came to mind with respect to that.
Alhamdulillah. It, um, it, it, it brings it, it brings it into perspectives, Insha Allah. Practicing the way, again, there's what we just read, it said, everything is in the Quran. If we didn't, if we didn't have a Sheikh, then we can, we can get a lot from the Quran. It'll definitely tell us, like you said, the path has been laid out. But are we, you know, I've, I've heard, I've heard the masters say that the Quran will open up to us if we don't have the right intention, if we don't have the right heart to read it, Insha Allah. So even just the whole purpose of bringing our, like you said, bringing our Naas down, like every, every level opens up another reality, Insha Allah. So that, and there's, you know, infinite amount of wisdom within the Quran itself, Alhamdulillah. But, uh, thank you, Sheikh. Thank you, thank you.
Alhamdulillah. And one more thing, Sheikh, you know what's interesting about that chapter of the Quran? The title of that chapter is the food, which is the nourishment.
Look, again, just, just, just like this text, like the Sheikh says, every, every, he says, every year, he's been reading the Quran almost 30 years. During Ramadan is always something new. He comes across, it's definitely like, you can read a chapter. I've been in that chapter a couple of times, but I know that it's definitely more to dive into that. I'm glad you brought that up. The food, is it Ma'ida? Is that the name of that chapter?
That's the one, that's the one.
Look, and it's funny you said that. I think, I think other translations say the table is, the food, is the double different translation for that. But again, just, it's just so much knowledge and so much wisdom in the, in the book.
Right.
Again, uh, may Allah, again, increase us to be able to read it and read it sightfully. Because this, when we get to a point where we can read the letters, you know, and then, and then start breaking it down. And we got a Sheikh mountain builder amongst us who can, who can give us the numerology on the Abja. A stock for law on top of the astrology. It's just, you can't, we can't, there's, Allah has just, you know, set us up for success, Alhamdulillah. So, um, now we appreciate you, Sheikh, that is Jeff.
Appreciate you, Sheikh.
Alhamdulillah. Insha Allah. We didn't want to, we tried to keep it at an hour, no more than, maybe, maybe an hour, right under hour and a half. So we're going to overload and we can always pick back up next week, Insha Allah. We got extended a few weeks by the grace of Allah. If we're able to, we can do that soon, but, um, when we, when we get to a dab, I wanted to get into, there was a document that was posted a few weeks ago from, from a Shad, from the Shadalia Order, Alhamdulillah, and it just broke down some elements of a dab. I think it was like 65 or 66 different, uh, you know, aspects or references to a dab and how we should conduct ourselves with our Sheikh and just on, on our path as Ma'riids, Insha Allah. But, um, Insha Allah, let's read these quick aphorisms as an intermission, Insha Allah. Bismillah, rahmanirrahim. Aphorisms from Khalim Rasool. Says, "The truth is very heavy and difficult for some to support. It is like thunder and lightning. When it is heard, each person thinks that it will strike them. A dab is often called good character or proper behavior. It makes the truth easy to assimilate." I'll leave a little moment after each one again, if anybody has any questions or comments on these aphorisms, straight from Khalim Rasool, that is Jeff. Again, it's like we said on a dab, just. It's saying that it makes the truth easy to assimilate by having good character or proper behavior. So we've heard the Sheikh say that, you know, that. Sufism is all about. The perfection of our dab, which was one of the main aspects that Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, came to perfect our character, perfect our dab. So. Just another aspect to keep. On, on our daily walks and our daily travels, that how. Maybe, maybe we don't know exactly. What the Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, did in, in a particular situation or was, or what any. Of the prophets may have done in a particular situation, if we do, Alhamdulillah, with. What would be our reference point? Then if we didn't, first and foremost, probably be our Shay, said. If we sat with him long enough, watched enough videos, he has, coming up maybe on six hundred videos. On YouTube, Alhamdulillah, uh. Over what, ten, fifteen texts and books out on Amazon and various sources and sites, um. To find again, what, or in, 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 Alhamdulillah, if we have his email address. Or a, a personal way to contact him. Insha Allah, where he, and he'll actually respond to you by the grace of Allah, that, and, and give you. A, a zikr, a verse of Quran, something to help. You know, with the, with whatever the particular situation is. What? In these situations, again, our focus should be our character. Our dab, I know, I know how he. To look outwardly like it's somebody else, they did this to me, they did it, they made me do this. Stokfala. They made me angry or upset, they said this to. And granted, they may have done some things or said some things out of place, they may, they may have, it may, it may, you know, it's very possible. We have to put ourselves in a state where we're looking at ourselves at all times. How we conduct ourselves in any situation. Any relationship or interaction first with ourselves, but we gotta watch how we talk to ourselves. Let alone how we talk to other people, the people talk to us and. Things of that nature, but. Again, always focusing on self. And our character, our dab, and how we can improve upon. Ourself in situations. Um. Allah is most gracious and most merciful. Truly. Truly, truly, so. Um, this is, these are those are just two attributes, Rob Man and Rahim. That we focus on. Would take care of a lot. Take care of a lot of situations for us, Insha Allah. Let's move forward, Stokfala. Bismillah, whoever does not have faith in their heart is a disbeliever, a kafir. Whoever does not practice Islam with the members of their body is one who disrespects the law, a fasik. Whoever does not perfect themselves by Hassan and their inner being is one who associates partners with Allah, a mushrik. One who does shirk. And practices self glorification, ria. Whoever does not conform his thoughts to the Holy Quran will go astray. He will cry and regret it in the next life. And whoever does not show consciousness of Allah, taqwa, by observing Allah's recommendation. Avoiding his prohibitions and then does not benefit from the mercy of Allah by making sincere repentance before his death. Will be clearly lost in the next life. Stokfala, that is just ring two. That is just ring two, but that is just ring two. Any questions or comments on those aphorisms? Anything we read so far on Hassan? Any questions or comments on the more triangle that is Iman, Islam, Hassan? Insha Allah. Got about ten more minutes. Now we'll read this quick section on a dab. And then we'll close out, Insha Allah, for the evening. Return next week. Bismillah. A dab, there are two types of a dab. A dab towards Allah. And a dab towards people. There are four parts of a dab towards Allah. Number one, to obey his recommendations. To avoid his prohibitions. Number three, to be thankful for his gifts. Number four, to have patience during trials. There are three parts of a dab towards people. Honor those who deserve honor. Be subtle with those who debate you. And number three, let those who do not deserve honor or debate with you follow their own way. Alhamdulillah, so. Read them one more time. The four parts of the dab towards Allah are obeying his recommendations. Avoid his prohibitions, number two. Be thankful for his gifts. And have patience during trials. Number three, Stokfala, three parts of a dab towards people, honor those who deserve honor. Be subtle with those who debate with you. Being ungodly in every argument. You know, first one saying is give, is it give, give honor, give respects where it's due. Second one saying, don't. Be subtle with those who debate with you. I think about Khun Khatimah, Alhamdulillah, where it said. Seal yourself, seal your knowledge sometimes. That is just ring two. I said, be subtle with those who debate you and let those who do not deserve honor or debate with you follow their own way. We've heard the Sheikh say. From the Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, to. You be your way and to me be mine. So we're not. Not looking to win any arguments on this, on the topic. Per se, they're not, they're not trying to convince people of, you know, our particular. Experience. Or knowledge or understanding of what we're experiencing, you know, this is. The Sheikh says, it's a, it's a, it's a subtle science. If we blink, we'll miss it, so. Bismillah, finish up on a dab, a dab towards Allah according to his recommendations and prohibitions. The first aspect of a dab towards Allah is repentance, Taubah. We hear that first step is Taubah, turning towards Allah. Repentance is to immediately stop doing all that is prohibited by the Sharia and to sincerely regret. All bad actions, words and false beliefs. The Moors should purify themselves by not telling lies. Talking bad about others and looking at or touching forbidden things. After the accomplishment of repentance, a Moor should conform himself to the recommendations of his spiritual guide. That will only recommend the best for him. The Moor should not have any inward or outward apprehension in trusting their guide. The only objective of the Sheikh is to guide a disciple to paradise and prevent them from going to hell. Bismillah. I think we'll stop there. We'll pick it up. Next week as we are still working on this, this study guide. Insha Allah. As we go through this text, so hopefully when we finish, we'll have something, by the time we finish, we'll have another document to, uh, help guide us. We can keep in our files to. Again, to keep our, our sword sharp on this information just within ourselves, Insha Allah. Anybody have any, I did have a question. I wanted to, as we were talking about sincerity, you know, just a question came to mind, if anybody. Wants to, wants to, you know. Shoot for an answer. Uh, and no, no, there's no particular wrong answer, but it was a couple that came to mind, just as we were talking about sincerity. You know, how do, how do we know? When one is sincere, like, how do we know if somebody is sincere? Anybody have any answers? It might be a trick question. Bismillah, you're breaking up shit, Stokfala.
Alaykum, can you hear me?
I hear you now, yes, ma'am.
Yes, I was saying you trust your godly intuition. So if it's in question, you go before Allah. And ask him to give you discernment. And then usually you could feel it in your gut if the person is being sincere.
I mean. Anybody else have any, any other answers? There is Jeff, Shayk, there is Jeff. I agree with that. That answer definitely came to mind. As we were. Sheikh Mountain Builder, you, you were gonna say something Shay?
Bismillah, I just wanted to add to that, that yes. That was the excellent answer and to add to it. If a person's actions. If a person's words are in alignment with their actions. That would indicate that they are sincere. But if they saying something and they doing something different, then that would mean that they are insincere.
Alhamdulillah. That makes sense Shay, that is your. Any other comments? On sincerity? Those did come to mind and the, the, the ultimate one for me Shay and Shayk that came to mind was that. We need to make sure that we're sincere ourselves, Insha Allah. So not, not that it doesn't matter. If another person is sincere or not, but most importantly, that I need to make sure. That I'm sincere. You know, the eye that is, that is here, we need to make sure that we are sincere first and foremost. And we pray that, like you said, that Allah. Mirrors that back. In the experience, Insha Allah.
I mean.
As much as possible, we, um. We appreciate everyone this evening. If anybody has any question or comments, we'll be closed out with a couple prayers. Still doing seven AM in the morning. Aphorisms, Al-Hikam, Ibn At-Tala, Insha Allah. We thank Allah for this Dara, thank Allah for our Shakes and Shakers, Insha Allah. All the friends. Loved ones. All those who you've come across on his path. Everyone we. Truly thank Allah for, thanks Allah to give us divine protection, guidance. Over our lives, increase us in all ways that we need to be, only he knows, to protect our families. In and outside of our presence. God, our Shay. God, our Shay, that is just Shay, I'm back daddy for. Keeping our Shay in this time as he travels to Morocco. Expand his. Knowledge and understanding in different sciences and ultimately share with us. We appreciate you Shay. Appreciate all the Shakes and Shakers here in the West, doing the work for Sheikh Al Muqabba, all the. Disciples, friends, Talibanis, again, keeping us. Keeping the school going. We love you, we thank you, Insha Allah. May Allah give to you to keep us all, maybe. Come back, return next week, Insha Allah, seven thirty PM. Wednesday night, we try to keep this consistent as possible, Insha Allah. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, Afati Ha, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, Rabbil alamin, Ar-Rahmanirrahim. Al-Makim, Al-Din, Yaqna, Yaqna, Asta'i. Edina, Sarat al-Mustaqim, Sarat al-Dina, Namta, Lehim. Gaidum, Agdu, Ya'layhim, Waladu. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Abibi Ma, Deeshak, Obedaya. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, may Allah give him peace, guide him on his path, Insha Allah, raise the station. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, Ubbalamin, Ashitana, Rashim. Abibi Ma, Yashrahu, Sana Karfajaa, Bichai, Yaptali, Manalai, Kalajaa. Abibi Ma, Yashrahu, Sana Karfajaa, Bichai, Yaptali, Manalai, Kalajaa. Dili Rabbin, Karim, Mina, Sharika, Lahu, Wasadri, Ayomanu, Ratsati, Amala. Ama Dun Salawat, Salafi, Abadi, Nala, Ify, Bih, Kulib, Kalaa. Et Tu Ilai, La Diya, Ma'ma Waib, Bu, Juma, Til, Kal, Ki, Ma'iktaru, Man, Baraa. Jai Tu Chila, Man, Kar, Ma'ali, Takri, Ma'adin, Wa, Kul, Mil, Ganbari. Ra'ban, Uhabri, Ja, Mia, Kap, Ri, Ra, Ma'ta, Ma'ni, Anishri, Ma'Kuran, Ukura. Umu Cha, Mustafan, Kul, Ma'asta, Da, Ti, Ta, Mil, Kal, Ka, Ya, Men, Ja, Tu, Bada. Ya, Ma'la, Kamu, Ki, Ya, Men, Jal, An, Ku, Adi, Em, Jamia, Wa, Re, Ha, Ni, Am, Da. Ya, Ma'la, Kamu, Ki, Ya, Men, Jal, An, Ku, Adi, Em, Jamia, Wa, Re, Ha, Ni, Am, Da. Ma'la, Kamu, Ki, Ya, Men, Jal, An, Ku, Adi, Em, Jamia, Wa, Re, Ha, Ni, Am, Da. Ma'ha, Chama, Ken, Na, Ha, Kal, Min, Daradi. Bichai, Yaptali, Manalai, Kalajaa. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, Salil, Amma, Dean. Be a dad in Faas, Ma'Klu, Kiti, La, Masalil, Amma, Dean, Be a dad, Ishar, Majud, Ti. La, Masalil, Amma, Dean, Be a dad, Ify, La, Wa, Da, Wati, La, Masalil, Amma, Dean, Be a dad, Obedaya, Ti, One, Ni, Ha, Ti. Ina, Madumi, Majude, Ila, Bad, Labadi. Wasal, Allah, Wasal, Allah, Ula, Sidi, Na, Mohammed, Wa, Ali, He, Ajma'in. La, Masalil, Sidi, Na, Mohammed, Abika, Wanabika. Atari, Ramati, Rabania, Wal, Ni, Ta, Ila, Ya, Wa, Ali, He, Wasabi, He, Wasal.